We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the Hastings Planning Commission. Today's date is September 26, 2016. This is a regular meeting. First item on our agenda is review and approval of the minutes from August 22, 2016. Commissioners, any corrections? If there are none, then the motion may be in order.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Deaver, do you have a second? Second by Alpa. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those are approved. All right, we have two public hearings tonight. First one is rezoning number 2016-37, R2 to RMU. This is at 313 Ramsey Street. Mr. Fortney.
Thank you very much. The applicant is selling the building to a buyer that would operate the ground floor as commercial hairdresser and would operate the second floor as residential. This is historically how this building operated for most of its life. The site is currently non-conforming because the lot is not large enough to allow for two units on it in an R2 zoning district. The parking for the site is currently deficient but grandfathered for similar uses or uses with similar parking needs. The proposed uses have nearly the same parking requirements as a duplex. There are two off-street parking spaces in the rear of the property. The site is adjacent to Dakota County's Mississippi Terrace, senior apartments, single-family homes, and a triplex. And it's along the alley. The 2030 comprehensive plan designates the property and surrounding ones as mixed use. The site is adjacent to mixed use, residential, and commercial. The proposed use could fit with other zoning districts, but the RMU district is already adjacent. It's a good buffer between residential and commercial, and it's suggested in the comprehensive plan. Property owners within 350 feet were notified of the proposed rezoning. The staff has not received any comments. Staff recommends approval and can answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Justin. I think we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this one. Anyone wishing to speak, step forward.
I'm the owner.
All right, then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. As we now know, the applicant is here and staff is available for any questions. Commissioners.
Justin, you said this was going to be a hairstylist on the bottom floor.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Other than Repel, what has previously been in the building and has commercial before was last rezoned?
I think it's been several decades. I'm not exactly sure. I think the owner might have a better idea than me of what was the last commercial tenants that were in the building.
Yeah, it's a little hard to hear.
If we could have you step up to the podium, then the folks who are following along at home.
Thank you, the U.S. Navy. I do have hearing aids, but I still have some aces and spaces. Okay. The building, when I bought it 11 years ago, had been made into a duplex about 20 years before that. But the 120 years before that, the downstairs was traditionally a commercial business and either the family or rental upstairs. I've lived there. I have owned it 11 years. Up until a year ago, I lived downstairs in the unit we're talking about. It's just one big room. It's gorgeous. But I think it's better suited, now that I'm going to sell a building, for what the people are asking to do with it. It'll be an exclusive two-chair hairdresser shop. They're going to actually put like a tin ceiling in it. They're going to make it period-specific as much as they can.
Was this previously zoned as commercial or was this a grandfathered in from way back into the commercial zone that we rezoned it into duplex? Is that what's...
It's R2. It's been a duplex, yeah.
Yeah, the history of that prior to its existing R2 zoning, I'm unaware whether it was zoned commercial in the past or not. That's a good question.
So what happens, so it's been grandfathered into whatever use it existed as?
Correct, yeah. The R2 residential use has been in, it's complied, well, the lot size is too small, but it's been residential for the last 30 or so years, maybe longer than that, Dave? Okay.
I think it was in the 80s that it was converted to a duplex.
Okay.
Will the owner be living upstairs or renting the upstairs?
Right now, there's a lease on the upstairs, but their plan is to use that when the lease is up.
Okay. So eventually will be owner occupied. So the parking in the back, there's two stalls for parking in the back.
It's 22 feet wide by 21 feet deep, so it's actually like...
Two cars?
Yeah, easily.
Okay. Thank you.
And I have, by the way, the picture doesn't show it, but I have fenced that portion in.
I looked at it on the way this afternoon, saw the fencing where the garbage is in the back and fenced it.
Mr. Deaver.
John, do we know if this is, is the property designated historic at all or...
Yes, yeah, it is.
It's on the local register?
I'm not sure if it's on the national register, too.
No, but it is a historic property.
And so does that affect...
Well, any exterior change would have to be approved by the HPC, including a sign.
Okay. But doesn't really affect what we're doing today at all? And will, will they have to come back when they establish the business at all to, I mean, if they're not making any exterior changes and they're just remodeling the inside and opening a business?
Generally, I would assume they'd probably want at least a sign, so it helps to go to the HPC for that.
Okay.
Unless they just do something in the window or something.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Slaton.
With parking, room for two cars out front along the length of the property, would that be designated as business parking only, John? Or is that to remain public parking on that stretch of road? At best of times, there's no parking down there, especially on a Friday night or a Saturday night.
Sure.
And the overflow would be sure to go into Mississippi Terrace. We could almost count on that happening if there was the parking taken out front.
I'm unaware if either of the spots have been designated for either residential or commercial, Justin. Do you know?
It's just general on-street parking. It wouldn't be specific to this business. It's not designated...
The off-street you're talking about?
I'm sorry, the street parking. The street parking.
Yeah, street parking.
Yeah.
So if the owners are going to park in, in the back and work in the building, they'll be having the two spots in the back.
Correct, that's correct.
People coming in are either going to park in the front or they're going to go over and fudge into Mississippi Terrace.
Well, yeah, there's other, I mean, there's other on-street parking, you know, further up or further down.
The street parking across the street from the building essentially is non-used. There was homes along that side, parking back. So that half-block is pretty much empty all the time.
All right, thank you.
Senator Justin, the thought process of bringing this forward as a rezone as opposed to a special use permit or conditional use permit, is that because the current owner wouldn't be the one, the transaction would essentially have to happen before we would look at that? Or would that be another means to get about this or...
Well, yeah, they could have done that the same way, the same timetable, essentially. John was the one that was kind of considering that in the beginning. I'm not sure why. This is more of a better solution, I think, all around.
Yeah, looking at that, if it stayed residential and it was used commercially, it would limit it to being only owner occupied as a home occupation, which puts limitations on the property itself. There is a provision on there for what's called neighborhood commercial under the R2 district, but it didn't seem to fit well within that because it wasn't on a major roadway. We were concerned about the precedent it might set there. When we looked at other zoning, the residential mixed-use district is a little bit unusual. When you take a look at the, at what the intent of the district is, it's really to service that transition zone with commercial and residential mixed. It has a maximum of, I think, 50% of the dwelling that can be used for commercial, half of it has to be used for residential, which fits this. And since the property immediately adjacent to it on the north side, the Mississippi Terrace building's already zoned that way, that zoning's been established in the neighborhood. So we thought that was the best way to go.
Great, thank you. The commissioners, any questions or discussion on this? If there's none, a motion may be in order.
I make a motion to accept the rezoning or to approve the rezoning, number 21637, R2 to RMU at 313 Ramsey Street.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wallace. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion on the motion before us? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That motion prevails. All right, next steps on this one, please.
Next steps on this, it will go to City Council on October 3 to have a first reading of the ordinance and to order a public hearing. Final action would then be scheduled for October 17 in front of the council.
All right, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is Zayo Group LLC Conditional Use Permit, number 2016-33, Construction of a Utility Within the Floodplain District, Mississippi River Boring. Staff report by Director Hinsman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. We have before you as a conditional use permit to allow a utility within the floodway district. When you take a look at the floodway code and take a look at the uses that are allowed within it, a special use permit is required for any utility that's in there. This is a little bit of an unusual situation in that the utility itself would be underground and the visibility or any improvements on the surface would be limited really to only the construction of the utility. That being said, there's also a number of other agencies that have their hand in reviewing this in frankly, a lot more intensive capacity than we do, according to the Corps of Engineers in particular and Minnesota DNR, to ensure that they are okay with what is happening on the site. So with our review of it, I really took a look at the conditional use permit requirements we have under the floodplain ordinance. Some of them were applicable to this, some of them really weren't. I'll go through those in a little bit here. But as I said before, the floodway district, there is a requirement for this type of permit to take place. Now, the floodway district is shown in yellow on the map here. It's a primary zoning district within the city. It has the same bearing as an R1, R2, a commercial district. The definition of this district is this is within the special flood hazard area, or what's commonly known as the 100-year flood zone. And so the area in yellow here is all within. It stretches mostly on the north side of the river up to about where the Southern Railroad Bridge is for the Burlington Northern Railroad, all the way to just south of the trail on the Dakota County side of it. That's the area in question that the utility being placed triggers the conditional use permit requirement. We have sent out notification for this to people adjacent to it. We have not heard any comment back from it. As I mentioned before, we have had agencies, including Army Corps of Engineers and DNR that have signed off on the project itself. So what the project would consist of would be a boring of a fiber optic line within the, basically within the trunk Highway 61 corridor. You can see in red here where it goes. It starts a little bit on the west side, flips over to the east side as it crosses the river. It's outside the right-of-way as it crosses the river because of the bow of the bridge. It's basically in the old location of the Highway 61 bridge and then meets it on the south side within the right-of-way, crosses over to the west side on Third Street and down to Fifth. The areas that are outside of the yellow are outside of our jurisdiction as far as the conditional use permit. We're looking solely at the area in effect within the floodway district itself. So how do we, we take a look and what factors do we use to make the decision? I looked at a couple of things within the report itself. One of the items within all conditional use permits, take a look at what effect it's going to have to the 100-year flood stage. And since there will not be any change to this permanently and very little change during the construction, it will not have any impact on that. As far as what's going to be happening with the boring itself, the boring would take place. It's a four-inch bore that would generally be about five or 10 feet below the surface itself. There would be a boring machine that would go from position to position. Crossing the river, it's a different machine. It has a rather long bore, as you can imagine, with that straight-line distance going across the river, and then a different machine as you get more into town. So essentially, where you have areas where it changes direction from north, south, to east, west, or angles off, there needs to be a bore pit constructed. That would be about four feet by four feet that we dig down to move and adjust the boring machine at that point. There'd be bore spoils that would take place as well, that would be there temporarily. One of the requirements is we would have those stored outside the floodway area. So look at other factors in making the decision. It's not going to affect any of the flood heights itself. One of the things that we look at is are there other options to accommodate it? We did direct them to the bridge itself, being that there was cable or corridors within the bridge itself that were established for utilities. From talking to MINDOT, these were subdivided into two different types, public utilities and private utilities. During the construction of the bridge, MINDOT reached out to different utility providers to see if they could accommodate future growth within the bridge. I believe one of those people that were contacted was Zayo Group. At the time the bridge was constructed, they noted that they were not interested in having any accommodation within the bridge. We asked them to contact other private utilities today to see if there was room within there. They did so and were unsuccessful. So they've done their due diligence to provide an alternative method to crossing the river other than the boring and going through the floodway, but have been unsuccessful in doing so. So we are recommending approval of the request as presented. I do have about eight conditions within the conditional use permit itself, and this is a public hearing. You can open that at this time, or I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. We're going to open the public hearing in case there's anybody hiding out in the hallway. No one's forthcoming. We'll close the public hearing. All right, commissioners, we'll turn it over to you.
Well, it would have been nice if somebody from the Zayo Group was here.
John, I have a couple of questions that you may be able to answer. Do we know who this line is going to service? Is this just a general utility that people in Hastings will now be able to tap into or...
It's a good question. I'm not sure who it would specifically be for. My understanding, I believe, is that it would be more of a general-use line. I don't have any more specifics beyond that.
Okay. And then my other question is traffic impacts. Do we know what the construction is going to be impacting traffic? I think people are ready to just use the bridge.
I hope not. No, I don't think it should. It's within the right-of-way itself, but the right-of-way, let me pull up another map. Here's rather large in the area. You can see on this map here, this is the southern bridge, King's Cove over here. This is about where the line would be located at. So it's going to be some distance from the bridge itself, crossing under here where they have kind of the overpass by Spurville, Spurville Loop. So it should have pretty minor impact. I don't know if it's going to, I can't imagine it would lead to any road closures there.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman.
Commissioner Slaton.
Once this proposed line would come under the river, will tap into the telephone pole wires or line and use that as its access or...
My understanding, Commissioner, is it's going to be underground all the way, all the way down to Fifth Street.
Way down to Fifth Street.
Yeah, Fifth and Sibley. At that point, I believe there is another fiber optic line that is underground that it would hook into there.
Okay. So it's basically in the footprint of the old, old blue?
Looks like it, yeah, as you see it right here.
Coming under. It's hard to project forward the next bridge 100 years out and how they would build that and where it would be placed. But it's, you know, but that's 100 years down the line, hopefully.
Yeah.
And not our real concern tonight, obviously. But it's interesting that about 15 years ago, I believe, the Metropolitan Council was considering building a line under the river for the sewer plant instead of building the sewer plant south of town. They were then going to pump it uphill and all the way to St. Paul at one time. That was a, one proposal they had. Has there ever been anything else forward with the moving of this plan or another plan going forward in that direction?
Sure, from a, are you talking about the sewer treatment plant?
Right.
Right. Yeah, no news on that. The current status is Metropolitan Council runs the sewer plant within Hastings. It serves Hastings itself. They have purchased land on County Road 54 by Glendale Road on the north side of the road to accommodate a future plant. They did that about 10 years ago. At that time, they were thinking 10, 15 years they would move it. I don't think that's their timeframe anymore. The capacity within the current plant in Hastings is still there, so the amount of sewage they could process in a day is still within the thresholds of the capacity of the plant. So it doesn't seem like it's any time in the near future, but they've purchased land for the long term.
Okay. While they're aware of that, having worked with the commission for a lot of years, but the proposal was to build a line under the river at one time.
I did hear that, yeah. I haven't heard that since.
You know, so that's all I'm going to have to, get a bore hole. Are these people talking, future, you know? It's just kind of the thought process.
Sure.
So if there's, never been any more talk?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Deaver.
John, how do we deal with the fact that this is, it looks like on the, on the Hastings site, it's going to cross underneath four or five streets, depending on how you count? How do, how do we deal with that as far as future roadwork or running into that line in the future? Does that increase our costs of maintenance of those roads in the future?
You know, any time that you poke a hole under a road, it's going to have the potential of leading to some sort of degradation to it. We've had our public work staff look at that. They didn't show any concern about that being a real problem in the future. But, yeah, any time you do have a line poking under a road, it does have a somewhat of an increase in the risk.
Well, I was just thinking along the lines of having to dig around it in the future, right? But I suppose they're used to that and it's just one more thing.
Sure, there's usually, yeah, there's, along the roadway itself, too, the right-of-way is, has different utility trenches within it. Probably the most concern is going to be the ones where they take, where they cross the road east to west there where those aren't as expected.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Alpa.
John, is there any precedent set already? Do we have any other transmission lines that are bored under the river like that? Or is everything going across the bridge?
It's a good question. I don't know the answer to that one. If we have other lines going across there, uh...
There'd be some gas lines somewhere.
Yeah, I don't know.
I would think there'd have to be gas lines somewhere on the Mississippi crossing this direction.
Sure.
Because those lines go east and west, so they would cross into Wisconsin. It wouldn't be anywhere near town, be in the south end.
Any other questions or discussion on this one?
Do they have a timeframe for this and how long is it going to actually take for them to complete it?
Sure, timeframe for this construction project, I heard earlier on that they were going to get it done this fall. However, the project's been delayed a little bit longer than I think the originally anticipated. So it all depends on when they get the boring machine staged up here and whether the ground is frozen at that time or not. I believe it's still their intent to move forward this year, but I'm unclear whether they would still do that. As far as the timeframe for the construction project, they're going to be having a specific piece of equipment here for the boring. So I've heard a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Johnson.
Maybe you could explain that to me again. Why is there not capacity in the bridge for the cable?
Sure, there were different corridors for utilities placed within the bridge by MINDOT. Part of them were for public utilities and part of them for private utilities. When they went through the design of the bridge, they contacted the private utility providers to establish whether they wanted a corridor across the bridge and what their parameters would be in that. Zayo Group was one of those people that was contacted. At the time, and five years ago or more, they stated that they were, they didn't, were not interested in having that capacity within the bridge itself. That being said, we directed them as part of the application to see if they could seek out Comcast or other private utility providers to see if it was possible to lease out a portion of their space to make that crossing, and they were unsuccessful.
So there was no, no forethought to have extra capacity there for, it just baffles me why there wouldn't be room. Four-inch conduit, they're talking about digging underneath the river.
Yeah.
And does that mean my cable bill's going to go up?
What's it going to do?
You know, I mean, I don't, like you said, we don't know who this is servicing. It just seems like, man, there should have been some extra space there across that bridge for...
Future.
Future, yeah. Just an observation.
I got one more.
Commissioner Deaver.
John, where the bore pits are depicted, is there going to be anything left there when they're done?
Oh, when, what's it going to look like, when it's done, they'll, they will fill the hole back up and it'll look like it did before.
So no, no manhole or nothing?
No.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Wallace.
So on the, on the, on the south side of the river, there is no plans for accesses or anything to be placed in. Once it's buried, they don't need to re-access it.
I believe that's the case.
All the way up to Fifth Street.
Correct.
Any other questions on this one, commissioners? If there's none, a motion may be in order.
One more question and consideration here. Most of the floodway over there is dead trees, and I imagine they're going to knock all that down, clean it up, obviously. Replanting being done other than cover?
With this one, the only impacts it should have on the surface is where the bore pits are going to be. And those would be four-foot by four-foot areas where they'd be sinking the boring machine in it, at areas where the line changes angles. So on the north side, it's pretty, pretty limited. I mean, you've, so I don't, it's, since it's going to be below ground, it's not going to have a tremendous effect on the existing vegetation or...
I think I'd entertain a motion at this point.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
I would move to approve conditional use permit, 2016-33.
We have a motion to recommend approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Slaton. Any discussion on that motion before us? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. All right, then we'll be on to other business.
Sure, I can update a few council actions since we last met. Last meeting we had here, we had a variance request for a property by Patrick Peters on 15th Street. That was forwarded to City Council and ultimately approved for the carport. And then we also had an action related to Alina Clinics, the rezoning, and the site plan for construction of the new clinic and the city council... And the City Council ultimately approved that as well. So with that project in particular, they are moving forward towards a closing and construction yet this fall. There's been a lot of flurry between plans of the public and private side of that. I think they're going to be looking to start construction early October on that, so rather shortly. Along with that, the art space project, same schedule on that one there. We're looking to close on that property, hopefully October 5th. And for them to begin construction shortly after on that one. So have a couple of larger projects starting late this year, trying to get in the ground so they could finish up with winter construction on that. So that'll, that'll be some good activity going on. As far as other actions that we have, looking, looking at meetings coming up, we still have some information of the original Hastings Design Standards Review that we will, will provide to the Planning Commission here in the future. We got a little bit held up with other activities going on in September with, with projects and so forth, but we'll, we'll be getting that out to you and bring that forward here in the near future. And I think that's all I had.
All right, thank you. Any other business from the rest of the commission?
Any update on the Hudson?
Hudson project, still looking to get approval on that from the National Park Service and State Historic Preservation Office for the improvement work within the structure. So crossing our fingers on that. We hope to be able to have the property transferred by the end of the year. So the, the couple of steps on that one, the developer needs to seek approval of his, his proposed rehabilitation of the building. And then we need their sign-off to finish up our environmental work. We've, we have two environmental contracts waiting on the wings for that improvement for soil on the outside of the building and then some soil in the crawl space areas. And then we've been going through a redesign of a vapor intrusion system to vent out the vapor, soil vapor from under the building. So we have the design of that done, looking to implement that. So from our standpoint, we could turn this around, have everything installed here in November. If we get the approvals as we hope to, which would be October 7th. And hopefully at that point, Confluence will get their approvals and we can transfer the property over.
It's moving slowly, but it's moving.
All right, if there's no other business from the rest of the commission, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Alpa to have a second?
Second.
Second by Deaver. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. We are adjourned.